All the meeting to order. We are a quorum, Lauren is not here. Is Lauren zooming in? I know she's out of town. No, Lauren. Okay, we have, we will proceed without Lauren, but with a quorum. Visitor comments and petitions. I know we have Paige Ziegler and Vern Ziegler potentially on the call to talk about the change. No Paige.
But there's Lauren.
There is Lauren. We are a full house. Welcome Lauren. Since Paige is not on the, on the call and he is probably the primary speaker about the change in county line between Knox and Waldo County will not take that up now. Any visitor comments and petitions? Anybody on the call? Nobody's here in person wants to bring up something?
Gabe, I just want to let you know that I'm here. This is Lauren Bruce.
Hey Lauren, perfect. Good to hear from you. All right, moving on ferry service update. There is an advisory board meeting. Next week, I can't remember the date. It's either next week or the following week. I know John King is out of the state right now, so I'll plan on going to that. The finance subcommittee is working on a list of recommendations for the broad 360 degree view of the ferry services being conducted by the Island Institute and perhaps a parallel investigation being conducted by the main state ferry service and MDOT at the same time. I'm not really clear if those are both happening or exactly how they're splitting that up, but we're preparing, I think, we hope by the next meeting to have a list just from the finance subcommittee, which I think are going to be very similar to the things that Islesborough recommended and are primarily focusing on reducing the cost of operations as well as the cost of maintenance going forward for the main state ferry service, which I think is going to be supported by pretty much, well, by most, by most people. But other than that, until there's the next advisory board meeting, I don't have any more update. Anybody have any questions before we move on? Sea level rise update Shay, is there anything to add for sea level rise?
Not really. Subcommittees are doing some work and before our next meeting, January 20th. There is a state program that I think Islesborough should consider applying for. There's a couple of different ways that we could apply either for specific action grants for some planning grants or kind of as more of a consortium of different communities. And so I'm having a series of meetings to kind of figure out what the options may look like for that, but I'll probably be bringing information to the next meeting or talking to Janet about kind of what we want to do. In order to be eligible, we have to kind of jump through a series of hoops. So it will mean some action will be needed by the select board in order to be eligible, but they're not large hurdles.
Sounds good. Well, we'll look forward to more on that in the future. Any questions about sea level rise before we move on? Hearing none. Upcoming meetings and subcommittee reports.
Do you want to go back and do the minutes?
Oh, I skipped the minutes. I skipped the minutes. Crossed it out on my sheet. Anyway, since.
I would motion to approve the minutes of Thursday, December 23rd.
Move by Shay, second by Phil. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous.
And Paige Ziegler is on the call.
Paige is on the call. Well, with that, I would entertain a motion. Not that there's not even on the agenda. So we. Yeah, we'll go back to visitor comments and petitions. Paige, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. I had two little things. One is I just brought my dog back from surgery and she was not that cooperative. And the other one has took me a little while to find your link. So.
Glad you could join. What, what can you tell us about the, the change in the boundary between Waldo and Knox County?
Well, this is LD 1806 and essentially it in 19, it was 1906 somehow ended up in Knox County. And so all the deeds for Lyme Island are in Knox County. It shouldn't have an effect on you or Knox County in the sense that it's federal waters. I was told this by Senator Curry's aide I called today. And so as far as the island or your tax base, it shouldn't have any effect. So essentially what we're doing is we're just moving the boundary over. So the archipelago that is Islesborough is it is in Waldo County. That said, I'm also contacted Anne Matlick, who is the representative and she's the co-chair for the state legal SLG, which is handling it this, the state and the legal government. I can't remember the acronym right now, but she's checking with Knox to make sure that the Knox commissioners that there's no issue about this. So that's what I can tell you at this point. It's, we're going to come before her committee on Wednesday. I'll be there. In Zoom, this is awesome. And Senator Curry will be there. So that's what I know at this point. Do you have any questions? That you might have since it just sort of came up out of nowhere, I guess.
What's the genesis of this bill and the thought behind changing the line? It just seems like someone had to have the idea that this made sense. I mean, why? I guess is one question.
Divine intervention.
Okay.
No, God does not speak to legislators. Trust me. What Senator Curry called myself and Jan Dodge and I think also Representative Cuddy, because we're, you know, representatives for Waldo County and said, there's, there's been a mistake on the boundaries and these three. Well, what their islands, but in name only, I guess you only have one structure, right?
LaSalle has a structure, right? More than one, perhaps?
And so that's the only tax base on that. And he said, and where, and I have to be honest, he didn't tell me where the genesis of this, this came from, but he said, because we're just doing the census. And I think that in, in that case, that's where it may have originated was around the census because in the bill, if you look at the language, it mentions a census of the 2020 census that it had been and it should, it should be brought back into Waldo County. As far as I can see, and I will double check on this, is essentially all that's going to happen is that all the deeds are now in Rockland at Knox County courthouse and they'll move to Belfast for Waldo County. And so where did it come from? I can answer that. But we were asked to, to join the bill as representatives, as representing Waldo County. Initially, I thought, you know, okay, this is just a movement there that's free, through these islands. But I'm talking to Anne Matlick and a few other people. I wanted to make sure that you folks don't get affected by this bill or essentially no one gets affected by this change to the negative.
Are these islands going to be part of the, they're not going to become part of the town of Islesborough?
According to, according to what I was told, no, they, they stay there. Two of them are unincorporated. And in talking with Senator Curry's aide this morning, she told me that they're actually under federal jurisdiction. And so they will remain under federal jurisdiction, but they would be put into Waldo County. So you will not, that will not affect your tax base. That will not affect you in any way. You don't have to give any services as far as I know, and I'm going to make double sure about this. I will be talking to people. If we find that there's any problems, we can withdraw the, well, we ask the committee to not to pass, and that's the end of the bill. So just because the bill's coming before the committee does not mean that the bills that affect a law or a statute at this point, there's a lot more time to find out the repercussions. And according to Senator Curry, who did the primary investigation, he said that there are no repercussions.
I mean, there's got to be some small change in tax base from Knox to Waldo, right?
That's what I'm going to find out. If, if they're unincorporated, then as I understand it, or if they're Gore and if Knox County has declared them part of their tax base, I will find out because Representative Matlick is talking to the, to the Knox Commissioner and she's finding out if in the past, they've been part of the tax base.
Would have a small effect on, it would probably decrease how much we had to pay in taxes at the county level, right? Because there would be a larger tax base and it would increase in a mark in a small way where they have to pay Knox, right? Because they're losing some of the tax base.
Conceivably, yeah, we'll find that out. If, if it does reduce your, your tax base, would you like to go with this bill? Do you feel? Do you feel you want to be involved with this bill in any way? Do you want to? But you're involved in the sense that we have to find out if it has repercussions for you. That's.
Yeah, we're, I think we're curious. I'm more curious as to why anybody is jumping through the hoops to make the change. If it's, if there, as you know, there's not going to be much of any difference to anybody. Why are the hoops being jumped through? I guess I don't necessarily have any issue with it. And I, I mean, I, I'll turn it over to the rest of the select board to ask any questions that, that they might have. But just, it's just curious, curious to me that, that mostly uninhabited islands are even that anybody's worrying about it. But any questions from the select board for Paige?
No. I don't know. I just, I'd like to know more about it.
There's some reason.
And, and I think, as I said, I tried to get hold of Senator Curry today because he he's initiated this whole process. So he can answer that question, not I. He just asked me as a representative for Waldo County to sign on to the bill with him saying, he told me at that time that there there'd be no issues. It was a clerical error that was in 1906 and they wanted to, to change it. But I will not speak for him and I will call him again tomorrow and I will get an answer from him. I couldn't get his clerk, his aide, excuse me, didn't know why he initiated it.
Okay, yeah, this is curious. And I think, you know, I, I saw this go by and I, and I emailed it to the, our assessor and town manager. And, you know, one of his questions, they're referring to it as the archipelago of Islesborough. And the concern being that they throw that into our town and we are requiring services to them, like we have municipal broadband and that's a very, you know, the islands are remote and it's just hard to know what the repercussions might be. You know, the broad repercussions, it's just, there's a lot of unknowns in terms of that, that type of change that are just not, not things that we deal with on a regular basis because the, it doesn't, these things don't change. You know, it's not like something that comes.
Actually, you have better internet services than we do. Maybe I'll buy one of those rocks to get yours.
That's the concern, right? You buy the rock and you want to put a tower there and beam it to your house wherever you are and we have to provide it because it's that's a concern. That's a legitimate concern. As funny as it may seem.
I want fiber right to Montville.
You should, you should get it. Get, get on your, get on your town to provide it.
We're, we're working on that. We have, we have a five town committee. I mean, this, we're starting to go on broadband all around the state. But that's a side and digression. So, so my question for you is when I get hold of Senator Curry, who should I, or what number should I give as a contact number? You know, which person wants to talk to him?
With the town manager, Janet Anderson.
Can, can you just say, my dog is starting to whine. She, she cut her foot very badly. Just one second.
Don't, no, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. So, well.
I found LaSalle Island. What are the other two that are being talked about?
There, if you look on the map, you have up, there are, I mean, so I tried to plot this on the computer just to get an idea of what we were talking and there's off the southern, so I think southwestern tip of Islesborough. You go far enough out, there's like rock outcroppings essentially.
Right.
Islands.
Okay.
They're uninhabited. LaSalle is the only one I think that has anybody on.
Okay.
And then most one of these, we were looking at something earlier.
I feel like most might already be part of Islesborough. It might already be inside the existing line. We have, we don't have a, I mean, this is me just like trying to type in the coordinates on Google. But it'd be nice to see the side by side maps too. I assume somebody has these.
Do you have a copy? Do you have a copy of the, of the bill?
We have a copy of the bill with the sort of the meets and bounds description of that line. And so Paige, I might turn it over to Vern. I hear Vern chiming in and Vern is the, the assessor here who I know is, is well versed in these types of things. Vern, please.
Yeah, Gabe, that was what I was going to say is one of the things that I think the town needs to see is a map of a before and after showing where the line is swinging that shows what we're picking up for additional islands. I mean, we do have several just outcroppings off of Islesborough and they, they really have limited or no value. But we also have some islands that do have some value. LaSalle Island currently is part of the unorganized territory and is assessed by the state of Maine, just like all the unorganized territory is. And if that's the case and, and LaSalle is still going to remain as part of the UT, then there would be no obligation for us at any point to extend there. But we need to be clear that this swing does not add anything to Islesborough. And the way that that bill is written, it says it's to reestablish the archipelago of Islesborough, which in my mind would reestablish it as part of the town of Islesborough. So those are the big issues for me is one, I want to see a map before and after. This is where the line is now. This is where the line it will be. And these are the three islands that would be moved from Knox into Waldo County. And then if there was some language in the bill that said that moving these, they still remain part of the unorganized territory and are not moving into the incorporated municipality of Islesborough, I think would, would satisfy us.
Okay. Vern, why do you spell your last name incorrectly?
I was, I was gonna, so your campaign posters all over Lincolnville last year, but I thought, no, I shouldn't do that.
Yes, everybody knows. Thick, I'm Ziegler and Vernon Ziegler and this, the Ziegler is a Swiss spelling in Southern German and, and Ziegler is, is from the northern part. But we can, there's a couple of things. If we move forward with this, we can in the public hearing, we need to bring this up and that's next week. And then in the, if we go forward, and I think you're, you're correct. You want to get this language in to protect you because it does sound like, and that's why I called the town manager to see if, if you were aware of this. Because when I read that, the bill, that's what it sounded like to me. It doesn't mean that, that legally that is the way it is. But we can put that in, we can bring it up at the public meeting and also during the work session. Anne Matlick is, as I say, she's the co-chair, the Senator Baldacci. And Anne is really on top of this and she would, in the work session, make sure that the language does not hurt Islesborough in any way. So I will go further investigating what the repercussions are up until Wednesday. And I'll get back to you and I'll get Senator Curry to call. Well, I don't know if he calls in the weekend who will call, but we'll get, we'll get, we'll get him to talk to you.
Hey Vern, is there any chance that you might be able to participate at that hearing?
Sure.
That would be great. I'd really appreciate that.
Okay, there's, there's two things. Can I just, going to, there's two ways to participate. One is Vern, you can either just listen on YouTube and you can't say anything, or you can have you done this before at all on the committee page? And we can walk you through this. You can submit, you know, just a paper saying these are our concerns. I'm, I'm the town assessor and then you can speak to the bill. So those are the two ways to do it. And I would suggest that you speak to the bill and, you know, submit a a email saying that you wanted to. And this week, if you had done it before, I'll get my aide to help you walk through that so that you'll be able to talk in the committee.
Yeah, the last time I testified before the committee, it was always in person, long before cell phones and computers back in the seventies and eighties when I was there on a regular basis for the main association of Realtors. So yes, if you could have somebody reach out to me, I can go around, I can poke around tomorrow on the committee page and see if I can find that and figure it out myself and do some comments and send in an email. Absolutely.
Okay. So that's the SLG committee, you know, you do main gov legislature. You start to, and then you'll do committees and then you'll, it'll give you a menu. You come down, you do the state and local government committee and then it'll say to the right submitting. I think it says submitting text or something to that extent. I mean, you'll, you'll be able to pick out what that means. Great. And so I will get back to you folks unless you have more questions. I mean, or you want me to do anything else.
Anybody? Sorry, go ahead Paige.
I've told Vicky Didero, she's aware and also Jan Dodge is aware.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Paige before we move on? Hearing none. Paige, thank you very much for showing up tonight and having the conversation.
Good luck with your dog.
Yeah, I hope your dog's okay.
She's one huge muscle. She's a rescue. We just got her. They told us she was 60 pounds. That was maybe when she was a puppy. And she is just phenomenal, sweet, sweet dog, but is crazy. She just leaps and so she tore her leg. Anyway, talk to you soon and.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
And thank you Vern for being, being here and thinking about this. Really appreciate that and, and being on the, the call next week.
Yeah. So what I'll do, Gabe, is I will go in tomorrow morning and figure out how to register to speak and also we'll send some comments to them. Hi Janet. Comments to them and I will share my comments with Janet and the board after I send them in.
Right.
You all have. You all have my contact information if you want to call me, right? Do you need me to give?
We've got it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Take care. Thank you very much.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Thanks.
All set with me. I will say happy new year and I hope everyone had a great holiday.
Happy new year Vern. Good to see you. If only in the computer.
Real Ziegler, yes.
Good night. All right, moving. Moving on, we are on to the town manager's report.
All right, I've handed out to you, well, looked at probably about this LD 1806. I've given you the second quarter expenses and revenues. It's year to date. If you have any questions when you go through, just ask me or Kathy, we can explain. Um, I wanted to let you know, report on the Big Tree Recreation Dock Project donation to date are $5,215. A letter regarding MAC Point as we just, when, in these minutes that you just approved, this is Islesborough Island Trust would like to select board to write a letter endorsing MAC Point and the choice for the proposed offshore windmill port. And I don't remember if someone signed a letter to seize contact at the governor's office dating. So I don't, did someone offer to write that letter?
Does anybody have a desire to write this letter? Another option is to reach out to Steve. He in the past has, has drafted something for us to consider.
Yeah. But I can do that.
Unless, so I guess we'll start with the question, does anybody have, have a desire to write this letter? This is the last one.
No.
Can you reach out to Steve and see if he might draft something?
And you want, you all want to sign it at the next meeting?
Yeah, perhaps if he wrote something, he could, we could circulate via email ahead of time. So we know that we may, may want to make changes and be able to do that in advance of the meeting.
I thought we had, because he was here talking to us about it, right?
Yes.
I thought he was going to.
Perhaps he was.
It's not mentioned and I don't remember that. I was.
Okay. I got. I think I just assumed that was just said that you, somebody would.
So let's just. Let's see if Steve might be able to draft something for us to consider. I think he, he certainly has a handle on what the outcome of the last meeting was.
That is very good. And then I just wanted to tell you, I think I already emailed you all this, but that Linda Wentworth, one of our providers at the health center submitted a resignation as of July 1st of this year. And she gave us plenty of warning because she knows. So we'll be noted and I've notified all the providers of supervising physicians. We will begin to search for her replacement and lots of times they do very well by just word of mouth. You know, someone knows somebody, that's kind of how we we haven't had luck advertising for someone. Usually someone has been here perhaps, and that's what they always hope. Someone who's been here to, or a relief might like to come back.
Is Owen the only PA?
He is right now.
So if we had only nurse practitioners, would we be in a position to not need a supervising physician?
Um, I don't know if you can do that with a health center, rural health center. There may be something that has to be.
No, because they bring them to the license of the doctor.
And this practitioner doesn't need to.
They don't need to.
Not sure.
They, they don't need to work under a doctor and they could, but I think because it's a rural health center, I think that's.
Just be curious to know. I mean, it's, at some point Owen will be done too. Might be, I hate to say it, but it's that, at some point, if we are thinking about the future of the health center and that's a reality down the road, we might want to think more towards nurse practitioners than physicians assistants.
But I think we've been down this road before.
Just throw it out there as, it, it might be a money saver down the road.
I think I checked, well, I was worried when we hired the first nurse. Thinking, but anyway. But anyway, so I think, I think, you know, hopefully I know it's COVID. I'm a COVID. Everybody's had it with medicine and thinking about COVID. So we'll see how this, we may have to change things up, you know, may have to change schedules and.
Is Linda a PA or is she a nurse practitioner?
Family FMP as is Dory.
Well, there's a shortage of medical people. You're going to the lab for a blood test. It's only three days a week.
It's cut back.
Seven to three. When anyone's super ready.
Now with all this testing again, it's running out, we're low on test kits. They're expecting them, but everybody's expecting, throwing a backlog.
Whatever the 500 million you see for rapid tests. There's, you know, what 300 million people in the country, that's not going to last, although.
They had about two dozen left here. They've been really lucky. And we've been lucky with the rural health center government giving us money and right now Adam Facker, which I think I've mentioned you before is helping with grants and he's found a couple of grants and what he's looking at right now, he thinks we should go for it's a four year, $200,000 a year for four years, but it's quality assurance program and someone's got to write the whole thing. He said he's willing to write it if we give him the information, but he has to know by next week and I'm just not, it has to be done by art. So I'm just trying to figure that out. I'm going to talk with Vern. I sent Vern the 50 page application to see thinks it's something that. Thinks it's something that we would love the money, but how, you know, how are you going to prove this and how are you going to?
$800,000 a lot. If, if we qualify, we probably ought to do that application.
Then as long as we are able to fulfill that. A lot of these grants are kind of like gray area, like the one I've got for 100,000 was testing and mitigation. You know, it's kind of a, it's a little. So I think that's it for me.
Any questions for Janet before we move on? Hearing none. Nothing on the agenda for old business. Although I see Janet has included the Islesborough looking ahead.
Um, I've included that or, and I put that kind of on the January 20th agenda or I can. If you, I've just given you a draft of last year, so just maybe say 2022. If you all, I mean, I think last year we did it in February. So it doesn't.
I think historically the chaired drafts, the first.
Where's Arch?
Arch has done that. I did, I did it last year. I'm happy to draft updated version.
Changes or additions, you know?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a nice thing to think about at least, you know, every year and try to update and change as.
I know it has a lot of information.
Yeah, it's nice to have a roadmap for where we've been and where we hope to go. And I think that I'm happy to do the first draft of any changes and then circulate it to the rest of the select board for thoughts, comments, changes, additions, subtractions, all of those things. And so hopefully, maybe we should put it on the agenda for next meeting to have a conversation about it. Something circulated to the select board before that.
And at the next meeting, you will be opening bids for towns, septic system. I've got the small community grant program. There's two that are going to be bid on. That's the only thing I have.
So that's old business, no new business, no other business unless anybody here or anybody in the call has new business, other business or even old business will take up. Hearing none. Next order of business is to approve the warrant number 14 for a year 22.
I would be approved number 14.
By Shay. Second by Melissa. Is there any discussion about this one? None, all in favor?
And the big item in this warrant was $160,000 going to Isles for economic sustainability for donations.
It's just pass through donations. Okay, no appointments. Chair comments, no chair comments tonight. Vice Chair comment Shay.
Comments.
No comments from Shay. Lauren, I'll throw it out to you as for comments, even though you're on Zoom, you have any comments, Lauren?
Well, I just, we're in the middle of a snowstorm in Nashville and it's coming your way.
Be, be safe down there.
Thank you. I will.
All right. Thanks, Lauren. Let's see, Melissa, comments, no comments. That means Phil gets the last word.
And Phil has no word.
All right, no comments from, well, except for Lauren, about the snowstorm. Parking ban tonight at the ferry, just a heads up, not tonight, sorry, tomorrow night at the ferry. And other than that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved in seconded, all in favor. 605.
No, no, last meeting we adjourned at 604. We're getting closer though.
Oh, that might be wrong.